Monday, October 9th, meeting of the Hazlet Board of Education to Order. Would everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is correspondence. Do we have any tonight, Dan?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public? Does anybody like to make any comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Cook. Just a few items to report on. First and foremost, last week, Wednesday, was our count day. I'm not happy to report, but our numbers were, our preliminary numbers are 2704, which is down about 27 from where we were budgeting. So, last year, we had 2741, so we're down about 37. As you remember, last spring, we were down about 30 from the fall, so we kind of went a little more conservative on our numbers, but right now, we're at 2704, and that number will probably change before the time we actually submit our report at the end of October. So, that's student count. October's designated as Principals Month, so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize all our principals. We only have one of our principals, Ms. Hicks, out in the audience today, but thanks to all our principals, all our ministers, they do a great job, so I just wanted to recognize them, Principals Month. And then, lastly, Midden Township, I wanted to say congratulations to them. They were awarded by the Michigan Township Association as the winner of the NIEC 2017 Best Place to Live in Michigan. And the rankings provide a comprehensive assessment of the overall livability in the area, and key factors include the quality of local schools, crime rates, housing trends, employment statistics, and access to amenities. So, Midden Township was voted number one place to live in the state. And Frank Walsh, their manager, actually recognized both Oakhamus and Hazlet Schools at the last Rotary Meeting as being a big part of getting that award, because local schools is one of the things that's, one of the things they look at in terms of making that determination. So, thanks to Midden Township. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Cook. We have several discussion items tonight. The first one is an out-of-state field trip request for the Hazlet High School choir students to go to New York City, and we have our choir director, Adam Vois, here to tell us about that.
Okay. Moving on for all of you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Mike, thank you.
Hello.
Thank you. This looks familiar.
I'll bet.
Junior seniors, right?
Yep.
It's a nice trip.
Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here and request this field trip. We certainly think it's a wonderful opportunity for our students, one that we've been doing for a number of years, every two years. To be able to take all of our junior and senior choir students that are involved, actively involved in the high school program, to New York City. We take the trip as an opportunity to really expose them to the arts and expose them to one of the central places of the arts in New York City. And so, while we're there, we, this year, we have the opportunity to book shows, you go see Hello Darling. And this year, as long as it all works out right, we're going to hopefully see Bernadette Peters on Broadway in Hello Valley. And then, also tickets for Anastasia, which is a really popular new musical, it's on Broadway right now. While we're there, we see the Lincoln Center, Central Park, Fifth Avenue, Rockefeller Center, Greenwich Village, Chinatown. We have an opportunity to perform in a somewhat casual performance, but at the St. John Devine Cathedral in Upper Manhattan, which is just actually gorgeous and beautiful, so there's a historical context, and it's a really wonderful opportunity to watch the students perform in this space and seeing kind of their reactions, you know, in terms of the way their sound travels, and then eventually makes it back, it's a pretty unique experience for them. We also have the opportunity to go to the Metropolitan Museum of Art and Radio City Music Hall. And in addition to that, so we have our dates scheduled for April 26th through 29th, 2018, with Bright Spark Adventure, or sorry, Bright Spark Trail, that was the name of the company that used to be Travel Adventure, so sometimes I mess it up, but. So, the reason we do it is to give the students an urban cultural experience and expose them to world-class big artists involved in town. The cost of the trip is estimated at $12.98 per person. This includes airfare, ground transportation, hotel, Broadway tickets, all tours, all the breakfasts, lunches, and dinners. The Hazlet Choir Boosters actually provides the lunches, so technically, once that $12.98 is paid for by the student, everything else is covered and everything is taken care of at that point. There isn't any, any additional money for anything at that point, unless they want to purchase any sort of souvenirs or extra snacks, or whatever it might be. The Choir Boosters kicks in $350 for every student who has made a decent contribution to the mass fundraising efforts for the past few years. So, these include ads and sponsors, and the Great America Sale at the Riddle School. It lowers the cost to $948 for most students. And this year, everyone that was, who was planning to sign up for the trip, will sign up for the trip, everyone's just saying that the program has at least made some sort of effort, not necessarily going out and getting the ads and sponsors of Great America, but they somehow contribute to helping, I guess, for the cause of the program. In addition to that, everything that each traveling family makes during the December trip fundraiser, two years ago, we did Qdoba, four years ago, we worked with Little Caesars. We try to find the best thing for the buck, if you will, in terms of a fundraiser that is simple, that's easy, but it's an opportunity for students to raise money that goes directly toward their trip. So, we're exploring those opportunities through Qdoba, Little Caesars, there's one also through Big V that came up, so the Hazlet Choir Boosters work together with the directors to come up, come up with a good plan for that. Each student will pay Bright Spark directly. This process allows for flexibility of payment options, ensures the payments are received on time, and accurately tracks each student's payment process. Families can access payment information at any time online and even make payments using their credit or debit card, and traditional methods are still available. And then, you see the payment schedule there, in terms of registration, and then each of the due dates for the additional funds to make up the total of $12.98. You'll see January 1st as well typically have the Choir Boosters pay $350 toward the trip. All right, moving along here, we want to make sure that the trip is available to any student that is interested. And so, our goal is we never ever want the reasons for the student to not travel to be the financial reason. So, we always communicate that upfront with the students and the families, and make sure that they understand that if they have any concerns financially, that they talk to us and communicate with us in that regard. Choir Boosters provides $350 for each of the students, bringing the cost down to $948 per student. And then, we also offer a scholarship and a loan program. And in a nutshell, the scholarship program is for any student that qualifies for the free or reduced lunch program. The Hazlet Choir Boosters have agreed to kick in an additional $300 toward every student's trip that qualifies for that program. So, I believe it brings it down to, there you go, right around $550. And so, then over the course of the next 10 months, we allow the families to pay $55 a month and actually break up the payments over the course of 10 months for $55 a month rather than $240 a month. So, it seems to be a really helpful way for those students to receive the scholarship toward the program. In addition to that, if a student does not qualify for the free or reduced program but are interested in the program, they can apply for the loan through the Hazlet Choir Boosters, and they fill out an application, and just simply need to write a little letter or statement, explain why they feel that they need additional help as far as a loan program. And all that means is we continue to keep their payments up to date, and instead of them paying Bright Spark directly, they pay the Hazlet Choir Boosters $85 a month over the course of 10 months, just to make it more reasonable for them, so. All right, so that kind of explains those as far as the loan and the scholarship program. Cancellation of refunds, we just, we try to explain the importance of, once you secure your spot, staying in that spot, just because it can potentially hurt the Hazlet Choir Booster program if they pull out. And we also encourage them to purchase the insurance, so that no one's on hook for, you know, additional funds that they don't follow through with. The, I will say that the boosters have been really supportive, in that because we have so many students and parents planning to go, we're going to add a second bus. I think we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 80 to 85 students and parents that want to travel this year. So, the Hazlet Choir Boosters is going to pick up the tab, if you will, the difference in order to make it work for those, for those additional families to travel on the New York City. And so, it's a great opportunity for the students to really say goodbye. Any questions? Anything I missed?
Can, we go just back to the date for a minute? Is, I feel like it's almost always been May. This is, is this the first year it's April, or, did it float into April the last time?
Yeah, I think last time, we were right at the end of April, so this year, the senior committee, the senior student committee requested that we go a little bit earlier, earlier, so they could have prom that first weekend in May.
Ah, okay.
And actually, for us, it worked, a lot of times, we're balancing so much in the spring, with our spring concert, state festivals, Michigan Youth Arts Festival potentially, there's a lot going on. And this year, it worked out really nicely that we were able to do that. The other nice thing about that is AP exams aren't until May 7th through 11th, and then 14th through 18th. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm hoping that this will continue this way, so that we don't bump right up to those AP exams, because I know that's.
Right, but yeah, we've done that a number of years, and that's fine, yeah. Okay, thank you. Anybody else with questions or? I can just say, I mean, my daughter went before your time, but, you know, my daughter's was a fabulous experience, and I get another awesome thing that, like we heard last meeting about the French trips, and it's have another great opportunity for our kids, so thank you for being willing to put together. It sounds like you've got quite a lot of people who are interested in going.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. It's gonna be a great trip, so.
So, you said you have about 85 who are interested?
Mm-hmm.
So, the numbers that you gave in here were 75, so has the price changed? Was that enough?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
It's, I still don't completely understand that part myself, but the, in a nutshell, when we sign on for the trip, they budget for 54 travelers. And so, when you add additional students beyond that, it, the price becomes more and more expensive for airline tickets and for Broadway show tickets, because unfortunately, the way our airline industry works, that as the plane fills up, those tickets get more expensive. And so, I believe Choir Boosters, in order to make it work for all 80 to 85 students and parents to go, they're probably going to be in the neighborhood of an additional $8,000 that they will put toward the trip to support, so that we can keep the cost the same for everyone.
So, the, you're getting there by air, and then the buses are how you travel once you get there, though?
Correct, yes. So, yeah, we take buses to the Detroit Airport from here, and then, once we get off the plane in New York City, then we travel, my coach bus, everywhere we go.
Yes? Okay, well, thanks very much for coming.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. So, this will be an action item on our next board agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next discussion item is the Hazlet MSU preschool, and it looks like we've got several people, and Sharon, your name is listed here, and I see you've got Pam and Gail here, too, so.
I do, so we have a little PowerPoint presentation, and it's behind you.
Okay.
You can also access it on your Team Drive if that's your preference. Still not working. So, we were asked to talk a little bit about the MSU preschool program, and we're thinking about doing that by providing you with historical perspective, a little bit about how it happened. And then, Pam Jones, our Director of Special Ed, is going to talk about the special education program at MSU. So, part of the MSU preschool program is integrating special education students into a program with what we typical, what we call typically developing students. And then, those students move to Wilkes-Barre, obviously, after they grow up and get a little older. And so, Gail Hicks is here, and she will talk a little bit about the transition into Wilkes-Barre and what that student population looks like. So, it's a collaborative project, and believe it or not, it opened in the fall of 2005, so this is the 13th year that we have had this collaborative project with MSU. It took about three years for us to actually put the program together, talking about a bond issue that built the wing onto Wilkes-Barre, and then really talking about philosophically what it would look like to provide an inclusive program for three, four, and five-year-olds with typically developing children. There are four distinct populations over there. We have the ECSEP, which is our special education children. We have Head Start, which is a federally funded program. We have Great Start Readiness Program, which is a state program for at-risk four-year-olds. And then, MSU has tuition students who pay tuition to attend the preschool. And for those of you who may not know, MSU has two sites. They have a site downtown on Grand River, and then they have a site attached to Wilkes-Barre Early Childhood Center.
Sharon, can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
The Great Start Readiness population, is that similar to the Head Start population?
The, it's a, it's for, you have to have risk factors. There's a set of risk factors for Head Start as well as Great Start Readiness. The financial risk factors are a little more for Head Starts, so if you, it's based on need, so the greater the need, Head Starts, the more children.
Which is what I would have thought, so the state program is kind of expanding that population.
Oh, expanding it a little bit.
Okay, exactly.
They have changed the rule this year for the first time, and now you have to be four by September 1, whereas before, you could be kind of a young four. And so, if you were four September, October, November, you could be a part of the Great Start Readiness program. Same is true for Head Start. So, the federal government and the state is restricting that, that number a little bit. And you will see when we look at numbers that we don't have quite as many students in Head Start or Great Start Readiness because of that.
But in theory, that would catch up, right?
Theoretically, it would catch up, yes, theoretically. I think Julie Brower, who is the MSU director, told Mrs. Hicks and myself on Friday afternoon that the state feels like something about, lost my train of thought, sorry. Oh, that some of the children were getting, the four-year-old program, some children were getting two years of Great Start Readiness program because they were getting in a little early, and then they were repeating, and the state only intended that to be a one-time program. So, the preschool facility itself at MSU, it has, there are five classrooms there, regular-sized classrooms. There's an office, there are observation rooms, so you can actually go into a little room and look at what's happening in the classroom. And part of the reason for the observation rooms, MSU is a training facility for students, and they want to see their student teachers, so to speak, interacting with children without being in that classroom. There is also a large multipurpose room. So, really, if you look at the facility, in addition to bathrooms and a teacher's lounge, those are the rooms in that wing of Wilkes-Barre. MSU presently uses three of the classrooms. Wilkes-Barre is presently using one of the classrooms for kindergarten classroom for overflow students. And then, our special ed population is using one of the classrooms, and Pam will talk more about what we do with POP, it's actually a pull-out program, and so she'll talk about that, and so we're using that classroom. The classroom that our special ed population is using for a portion of the day is also used by MSU for a lunchroom.
And it's the three classrooms, is it still one three-year-old classroom and two four-year-old classrooms? Because it was the four-year-old shared with Great Start, so they had.
Yes, well, it's three, four, and there are some young classes. So, the collaboration agreement, which took a couple of years to sort out, we, MSU agreed to do certain things, and Hazlet Public Schools agreed to do certain things. So, MSU agreed that they would create, develop, implement, and administer the program. So, we really don't do anything about teaching the program, figuring out what the curriculum will be, that's all on them.
In all of those, in, you're speaking to the Head Start content?
Yes, yes. Head Start content, Great Start Readiness content, tuition content, and even content for our special education students, because they're integrated into the preschool program.
And they're doing this in the three classrooms that they have?
Yes, yes. They're doing that in three classrooms that they have.
Gotcha, gotcha.
They provide personnel for that program. They hire the teachers, they bring students from MSU here to work as aides or support for our students. They provide all the consumable materials. So, if there are science materials, hands-on math materials, whatever, they provide all art materials, all of that. They maintain and replace program equipment and furnishings as needed. We initially furnished the building with tables and chairs and computers and whatever. They've agreed to maintain and replace those things as needed. And then, they essentially pay us to rent the facility. So, they pay us $45,000 over here to rent the facility.
And has that figure stayed, remained the same over the years, or has that increased over time?
It has, well, originally, when we started the collaboration, there was a formula that was put together, where we got a percentage of their profit, so to speak, and it was just really crazy to try to get it. So, probably for about the first three years, we tried to figure it out, and it just didn't work. So, we actually decided to have just a flat fee, and it has not changed since then. And they actually have less space than they do when we opened the facility. So, that was part of the reason that we didn't end up adding more cost to that, is because they don't use as much space as when we originally started the agreement, so.
Good, thanks.
So, our part of the agreement, we do short and long-term maintenance. So, we provide custodial, we plow the parking lot, we shovel the walks, we repair anything in that building that needs to be repaired. We provide special education. We provide special education services, so our students are integrated into the classrooms, but we have a teacher consultant, one paraprofessional, and a speech and language pathologist that services that population. So, we provide the special education support for our students who are there. We also reimburse MSU for tuition, so we pay the tuition for our special education students to attend the preschool. And then, their multipurpose room, which is kind of like a gymnasium, we jointly share that room. So, we do use the multipurpose rooms for some of our physical education classes, and we work through a schedule, and that was agreed upon at the very beginning of the collaboration. So, Wilkshire, even before we had the preschool addition, Wilkshire Early Childhood Center always provided classroom space and support for Head Start, GSRP, and the special education children. So, that wasn't a new program in 2005. We had always done that. We hired the GSRP teacher, we wrote the grant for the state so that we could take care of that four-year-old population, primarily because they're our students. We knew they were going to come into our kindergartens, and we really wanted to provide that support prior to entering school. And Head Start always has a relatively large Hazlet population, and so, we were able to provide space for Head Start, although they ran their own program. We didn't run it, they ran it, but we gave them space in our facility. And we even had a portable at one time that they used for Head Start. And then, we've always had special education students, only there wasn't a program for inclusion. So, they were in a self-contained program within the building at Wilkshire. And that was before, it was a half-day program. So, we had a morning class and an afternoon class. I think there's one more thing. Go ahead. Oh, no, it's fine, you're good, you're good. So, this gives you a little look at the enrollment over the years. So, back to three or four years. This year, we only have thirteen children in GSRP. We are, we still have slots available, but ten of those thirteen children are actually Hazlet children. So, that's what the H stands for. In sixteen seventeen, we have twenty, which is usually our max. We usually have about twenty slots. Eighteen of them were ours, and so forth. And you can see over the years what that kind of looks like. Head Start, we have twenty-five children right now. We have five open slots, and Julie says part of that's due now to this September 1 date. Of the twenty-five Head Start children, only thirteen are Hazlet.
And that's a similar percentage, except for last year?
Yes, very similar. This year, we have twelve early childhood special education program children. All of the early childhood special ed program children are ours. We do not take schools of choice for that program. We have had significantly more in the last three, four years, twenty-one, twenty-one, seventeen, although eight to ten years ago, twelve and thirteen was a pretty average number, so that number varies. And then, the tuition students, we have thirty-five this year, eleven are Hazlet. So, over the years, we have typically had about one hundred students out there.
How do we identify the early childhood special education?
Pam won't be happy to answer that.
Okay.
You can jump right in, but you need to come to the mic.
Sorry, Pam. So, we can just stay on this slide just for a second, because the first little point on the next slide talks about the early childhood special education population. So, the numbers are down, however, with that said, the student need is increasing, truly, and it has over the last, I mean, since I started and I'm going on my fifth year here. We actually have a nurse working with one of our students in the preschool, one-on-one. So, we really do have significant needs, and throughout the district, we do as well. So, although the number looks low, and the workload is still high because of the needs. So, yeah, we can go to the next slide. So, the current program, Sharon touched on this just a minute, so that the POC program is a pre-opportunity learning program, POC or pull-out program. We started that program last year as a pilot, and what that means is, so we have a fully-included preschool, but we have students with significant needs, and all their needs were not being met in the inclusion classroom, unfortunately. But, we know special education is individualized instruction, so the students with the most significant needs, we pulled out for about forty-five minutes to an hour to work on social, emotional, academics, everything. And then, our goal was to then include them back into the classroom with those special skills, or the intentional skill training is what I would say, so they can integrate right back in, because it was just too hard for them to take all of that in and working with our special education teacher and speech path to the eighteen students, truly, then with three or four special education MSU students, a teacher, all of that. So, we're really excited about that. We're on year two. It is a research-based program. We are data-driven, and students are, that's how students are chosen to be part of the POC program. So, we're working in coordination with MSU for data collection, and we have three meetings this year of data needs to talk about students because it's an open flow program, just like RTI in our district. Students, it's not a place that they always have to live, they can visit, and that's what the POC program is too, so we're pretty excited about that.
So, Pam, how do you find those three-year-olds?
So, oh, yeah, so I can answer that question for you. So, our referral source is Early On, Build Up Michigan, and then Project Find, and then sometimes pediatricians or doctors will just refer parents, and I just will get a computer phone call without a formal referral. So, we've got three pending right now, so although the number is twelve, we could have fifteen by the end of November. And usually, the population does grow, because for preschool and early on, for special education, students, once they turn age three, and they are identified through Early On in special education, we have to hold an IEP before their third birthday if they're a program student, and then they come into our preschool. So, obviously, everyone's birthday is not before the beginning of the school year, and it's through the, throughout the year. So, that's why you see the population growing as the school year progresses, yeah, so... Can we go one, back one slide, I want to ask a question, which is not quite a Pam question, but, so you said again, this is down at twelve. We have twenty-one the previous year, twenty-one before that, seventeen before that. I know you haven't been here that long, what are we, what's sort of been the normal, and what, part of what I'm wondering is, is this a little bit of an indicator of how big our kindergarten and first grade classes? I'm thinking those two twenty-ones were our first grade and kindergarten. They didn't start out that big, though. I mean, we truly, those years started out at about thirteen to fifteen students. And truly, to be quite honest with you, so our twelve right now should be about fifteen. We've got three students that have left our program this summer to go to Residential Options Incorporated for ABA therapy and Children's Therapy Corner. So, there's students who their primary disability is autism, and parents want a very intentional, very rich program that we just can't offer to them in our inclusion setting. We can offer some of that through our pull-out, through our speech and language pathologist, through OT, through PT, but not what they're going to get through Children's Therapy. So, I've had conversations with those parents, so really, we should be at fifteen. Gotcha, and then you got these other ones? Yeah, exactly. So, that's why, so that is an anomaly, and I do see that trending because of what we know about autism and the research that's being done, and the programs that are now available, that weren't available five years ago at all. And that includes the East Lansing Eli Program too, at the East Lansing site. So, that's why that number looks different. And I can't speak to the rest of...
Did the grade level, well, not, excuse me, the grade level, the birthday change impact this at all?
No, not at all, no, it's three. And honestly, so as a county, we looked at, we can start, we're receiving students at age two and a half. So, that was a huge discussion that we had in district and that other districts are having too, because depending on the population, when school starts, the significance of their disability, do we start at age two and a half when we can, but early on, really can serve up to age three. So, it really depends on when the school year starts, I mean, there's lots of things that play into that, and we work together with Early On to provide, you know, the best timing for the student, is it a natural break, isn't it? All of those kinds of things, yeah, truly, yeah. So, going back to support, so as Sharon had mentioned, we do have a special education teacher, Tara Marsh, who goes into the classrooms and then also is part of the pull-out program. Susan Hogan is our speech pathologist. She is just dedicated to the preschool. We, two years ago, I think, we brought her on, or does this year too? Yeah, so I believe that then probably three years ago or four years ago, through data, we realized that we really needed to support the preschool differently, meaning that we really needed to hire somebody and designate a person for the preschool. Prior to that, we had been sharing the speech pathologist with Wilkshire, and she was full-time for the entire building, and it was, it was too much. So, and that's served to be very well, and we had, with that said, we also have a paraprofessional that services the program, Kristen Cook. We have our OT, Kellye, it's our PT, Anya Blanchard. Our school psychologist is Joan Price. So, they receive all the supports and services that our K-12 receive for special education and preschool setting, and our school social worker as well, who's Susan Seapier.
Pam, talk a little bit about three, four, four-year-olds who do not qualify for the preschool program, but qualify for speech and language.
Yes, that's a whole...
That's another whole piece.
So, Susan Hogan, right now, has seventeen on her caseload, on her speech pathologist, and so, the program students are on her caseload, and then she has what we call driving students who do not attend our preschool, but they, they attend, they're Hazlet students, and they attend preschool programs in the area, and they don't qualify for a program, special education, but they, they apply for a required, for their disability is speech and language impairment, instead of like a cognitive impairment, or autism, or physical impairment, and their parents drive them in. So, she holds two to three sessions, and two to five students attend each one of those groups, either once or twice a week. Yeah, and then those students, they are Hazlet students, usually then migrate into Wilkshire.
Pam, do these students typically migrate at the, at the same age? They would migrate when they're five years old? If they're five, by September 1st, they would then migrate to Wilkshire?
Yeah, yes and no, depends on the student, to be quite honest with you. I would say most of them do, wouldn't you? But there are exceptions to that rule, where a student might need just one more year because of social, emotional. Typically, it's not the academic piece that would hold them back from doing that, but it would be the social, emotional piece, just that one more year under your belt, depending on your disability. But it's still a piece of the whole, it truly is. I can't think of, I can't think of anything else. I gave you a lot of information. What other questions, what you have for me?
I had one, so with these students that we have, do we have any longitudinal studies on if these students are going to continue to need support, usually all the way K through 12, or do some of these students end up not needing the support later?
I will tell you, just being, you know, a K, pre-K 12 district-wide employee, I have great success stories that I often share, you know, with Gail, and Sharon, and Steve, and then Judy and Diane too, when we see students in middle school and high school. But I am only going on my fifth year. But, you know, that's a great question, as far as tracking, we probably have the data at our hands to do that, but I have never had done it before, I mean, never, never ever tracked that to that extent.
It often depends on the disability.
Right.
And the severity of the disability.
And with RTI now, MTSS, truly, our mild population is decreasing, which is wonderful to see, but our severe population is steady. And I, increasing is not the right word, because it's always been there, but we have more severe needs, I guess I should say.
That makes sense.
And even though K-12, our special education, less severe population is slightly decreasing with MTSS support, the students are still at risk. So, instead of supporting them with special education service, we're now supporting them with general education in the form of a RTI coach. So, it's not like that, what, often that, those students would have been supported in special ed, they're not now, but they're still requiring support in gen.
Right, they don't go away, they're supported, Sharon said, through, and she's in intervention classes.
It's just a ship, you don't, where are you going to do it?
Anything else for me? Any other questions?
Got the moment, but don't go there.
Thank you for your support to the special education.
So, I have some numbers to share with you. We kind of take a look each year of how many, we should say, CDL children come into Wilkshire, and then also kind of take you to look at schools of choice. Are those numbers impacted by the CDL? So, are students that come to the CDL that are not Hazlet kids, do they, how many of those stay and come to Hazlet? So, you can see those numbers there. This year, we have a large group that came in from the CDL. We have forty-two students, which kind of explains our bulging kindergarten numbers, and, but only two of them are schools of choice. And so, when you take a look at the count, it looks like we've got about twenty-nine in two DK sections, two oh-seven in nine kindergarten sections, and if you look at that, about twenty percent of our kindergartners were from the CDL. So, if you look at that, and that pretty much stays steady with the last several years as I look back, again, pretty much the same kinds of things. You know, a couple of years ago, we were in a situation where we started out with seven sections of kindergarten, and right away, we saw the increase of numbers with new students that were entering the district, and we moved that to eight in October. Kind of like this year, we started out with eight sections in first grade, and we saw, again, the increase in numbers, and we moved to nine sections. So, before that, we had a small group, and that's where those small groups that go through, when we have those small groups, that's where we end up with seven sections of second grade and seven sections, so those kinds of things. So, now, it's going to, it's kind of going to flip a little bit, because the last two years, we've had nine sections of kindergarten, nine sections of first grade, so the numbers have been a little bit bigger.
Gail, for, how are you defining CDL here? Is that just the tuition students from MSU?
No, that's everybody.
Everybody in the, in the, so that's the...
That's GSRP, that's Head Start, that's special ed, and that's also the tuition students, so those are Hazlet residents.
So, but, of those CDL kids, we just saw on the previous slide that there were twenty-one special ed kids last year, so of those forty-two, twenty-one of them are special ed.
They're now kindergarten kids. Those twenty-one students are now all four-year-olds.
Oh, wait, because they may be there longer. Gotcha, 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 okay, 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 okay.
And that's one of the benefits of having the CDL and that special ed program out there, is it does give us indications of the kinds of needs we're going to bring in, and gives us opportunities to collaborate with the special ed program, the CDL, as well as the special ed program at Wilkshire, to kind of get ready for those needs. And as Pam and Sharon both said, those needs are, they're higher needs than they have been in the past, because they're coming to us, are coming to us with a few more concerns and issues than they have, but it is a nice place for us to kind of stay on top of that, having them right here in that, in that same building.
Okay, I think one of the things I've heard anecdotally is way back when the program's starting, we thought it might draw out-of-district students in, and at this point in the program, the schools of choice numbers would not suggest that that is what's happened. It could be that the existence of the program gets people to move into the district with their children, but we're not necessarily... be with their children, but we're not necessarily drawing schools of choice children because of, at this point, fifteen years to have, whatever.
And I would say that's probably true, because actually, I came to Wilkes-Barre at the same time as CDL, at the same time as we started that. So it was thirteen, this is my thirteen year at Wilkes-Barre, and also thirteen years with the CDL. And I would say that's pretty, been pretty typical.
Always had.
That we did think that schools of choice would be impacted by it, but really, it's, as you can see, it's, it's a small percentage.
But we still have been very comfortable with our kindergarten schools of choice numbers over that period of time. We might not have had the space for many more, except maybe some of those small years.
Interestingly, if you look at student count, we have two hundred and seven kindergartners. We actually, in the past, we would have more kids graduating than we would have kindergartners coming in. We actually, last year, only had a hundred and eighty-some graduate, we had two hundred and seven come in. So for the first time, we actually had more kindergartners coming in than we had seniors graduating. But the problem is, is that what we see is our retention ratios in the middle grades, kindergarten, middle school, we've actually lost kids. And so the Wilkes-Barre phenomenon is helping us for the long term, but it's that middle grades, if you look at our numbers from this year, that we're actually down below one, which means we had less kids from a prior grade than we had in the next year. So it's kind of interesting to look at those numbers.
Some of the other things that, that we do with MSU to prepare those preschool children for their public education, their K-12 education, in April, MSU holds an open house for their parents. And I attend that. It's kind of a real casual kind of a, an open house where the parents can ask questions. I have a little bit of Julie kind of prepares some questions for me that she'd like me to address. And then I have an opportunity to talk to some of our Haslet parents. There are also some Eastland's parents that attend at that time too. And I think part of it is just those parents wanting to know a little bit about what's ahead for kindergarten. I mean, kindergarten is kindergarten, so I think those parents are just trying to prepare themselves for all of the information that they can get. Then we, in April, we run a round up to Wilkes-Barre. We work really hard with the CDL to get those Haslet kids registered. For some reason, that, they don't automatically, they think that because they're at the CDL, they're already at Wilkes-Barre. And so that's been a real struggle to get people to understand that, you know, they are two separate programs and we need to kind of combine those. So we've been working really hard the last couple of years to really get those parents to, to actually come and enroll, so we can count those numbers and we can then prepare for the next year. And then we have, from April through May, well, even before that, sometimes, the special education students, especially will visit Wilkes-Barre. They'll come down to the, to the Wilkes-Barre side, they'll walk through, they'll come into the office, they'll meet me, the secretaries. Very often, Tara prepares social stories for those kids with pictures of us. The kids get an idea of who they have, who they'll see. They get to see the flags, they, you know, they learn about the tentering flag and the Apple flag. It's just a real opportunity for them to kind of get more comfortable in the situation coming down to Wilkes-Barre. We also, the CDL staff and Wilkes-Barre staff meet to talk about the students that are coming into Wilkes-Barre. And we meet with the teachers and Julie, special ed teacher, and we kind of talk about some of the concerns and/or some of the challenges and/or some of the things we can look forward to with those kids coming over, some of the things we'll be moving with them from the CDL. That has been very helpful for us, because when I go to balance classrooms, it's nice to be able to have that information about some of those kids and some of their needs. Any questions?
Can you remind me, are they on the MSU calendar or our calendar?
They are on the MSU calendar.
Okay. So even the GSRP and Head Start folks are all on there?
Like today, when we didn't have school, MSU had school. Now, they will notice a real decline in enrollment on those days, because typically, if you give them to your Haslet family, they'll all show up for those kinds of things. And then the other part is, in December, when MSU closes down, then those Haslet students don't come to us. I think it's a happy program. Good questions?
Well, I have an overall question, just for my part. So is there a federal statutory obligation for these school districts to provide this But it, it benefits us to do it.
Absolutely.
And the G, and the state program that is GSRP, that we call it, is, is there a state legal obligation on the district, but it benefits us to do it?
So as the special ed, we do have a legal obligation.
We have a legal obligation.
I always felt, especially with GSRP, that these families may be low-income, they may not have the opportunity to send their children to preschool. And so if we could provide that for them, because the state would essentially pay for us to hire a teacher, that that gave these at-risk students an extra year and prepared them for kindergarten. Now, we, in the early years, we had to press the grant, we had to do all the work to provide that. Now, I believe the ISD actually does all the grant writing for us and all the reporting for us from GSRP, which is very nice to have that. And then they essentially say, you have twenty slots. So, but it does, I think, promotes preschool for all children, and they definitely need that. So it's our, to our benefit, even though we're not legally obligated, it does help those students come into kindergarten more prepared.
So I'm trying to remember, are there a reserved number of slots for Great Start or Head Start for the tuition, like in the program? So there's, okay. Because I was trying to remember how that all...
MSU has about twenty-five to thirty Head Start slots. And GSRP used to be about eleven or twelve. Typically, the last several years, it's been, we've had about twenty slots. And if a neighboring county or district doesn't use all their slots, and you have children, you can kind of borrow those slots and educate the children and stuff.
Although to that point, I think my experience in working with some other counties on human service related things, the GSRP's are down all over, because the birthdate issue has really...
The birthdate issue is, well, you can see, is affecting us.
I just want to say, so both of my boys went through the Child Development Lab. And I always appreciate as a parent, the consistency, just that, you know, all the CDL classes have flags and that's how they identify their rooms. So when my kids went to Wilkes-Barre, it was just all very familiar and they felt comfortable in that transition. And I was always very impressed with how much back and forth there was. It definitely helped with that kind of kindergarten not being so scary. So I, I've always been impressed with the amount of collaboration that's happening between the two. So thank you for the work.
What, if, if someone from MSU were here?
You could have invited them.
I was, what do you, you know, from their perspective, what do you, what would you, could you share how they feel about this? Or, I mean, I know you're not, no one's here, but what's your sense of how they feel about the collaboration at this point, thirteen years in?
Well, it doesn't go without challenge. If I said it was extremely smooth and it was, works very well, that wouldn't be totally honest. But I think that it has been a great learning opportunity for all of us. And I believe that because MSU, the CDL, is a training program for students, the students who are able to come here to train in our classrooms have the benefit of having the integration of special education students. And that is huge. And I think, Pam, don't they get an endorsement now? A special endorsement that now qualifies them to work with special education students? So from that perspective, it's very positive. I know it's one of a few programs across the United States, and MSU will travel around the United States and talk about this collaboration. They're very proud of it and the opportunities they've had to learn.
And they've also had many visitors that have come to see the program. Many, the whole integration piece is unique.
And total anecdotal, but when we were looking for preschool for some, I called since I was on campus. And they said, oh, you're in Haslet, you need to call them. You need to apply to that program. So they see it as for, for Haslet kids, it's a way to be part of, you know, to be integrated in the schools or whatever. Really, yeah, sample of life, that's what I was encouraged to do.
I often, I probably receive one to two phone calls a, a year from special ed directors, not within our county necessarily, but outside our county, that would like to come and check out the program. Because truly, when it started, I mean, I was in another district and it was cutting-edge, that it was fully included. I came up here and visited from Carolina, I was a teacher, you know, and brought my early childhood special education teacher from Lubbockville. We came up and spent a day, we were just in awe and wanted that program to be in our district, so, which we did eventually, you know, Lubbockville did then adopt that. But, you know.
It is a very unique opportunity to be able to include with typically developing students. You know, there are other ways you could do that, but you would have to partner with another preschool in order to override that view. And the other districts do do that.
One more question, to follow up on Dan's inquiry about longitudinal look. It would be interesting to keep that on our radar. I don't know that I have all the right questions that I'd want to ask right now. But you talked about some students being able to transition out of full special ed kind of supports to other kind of supports.
And/or, and/or not as much support.
Right. And, you know, that seems to be a very valid measure of success, but it might also be very instructive for the students and their families when they migrate out of our system.
They feel it.
But to understand how their student changed support needs, what kind of supports were still really helpful, so that they can continue those going forward. But it, it probably would be helpful to keep the longitudinal concept in mind as to how we can explore how this is impacting student skill development and performance. It's part of the data input.
Yeah, our IP's are data-driven. It's about individual student needs, so our IP's show us that. You know, with accommodations and modifications, and we're starting out at Wilkes-Barre with ten, you know, or not as many, because everybody, you know, accommodate there because children are learning to read, and then we have four maybe to two-five, and then the middle school is less. By high school, a student might have two or three accommodations versus the ten that they had. That's success, even though they're still in special education.
But it wouldn't just be the Wilkes-Barre experience.
No, it would not be the whole special education.
Absolutely. And in two-five, I mean, so we might have major struggles at Wilkes-Barre, and then we get into five, so maturity, and then specialized programming. And our different buildings offer different special education supports and services. And then they come together at middle, middle school, absolutely. It's the whole experience.
It's very situation-dependent. So you said that, exactly what you meant. There are certain types of, you know, challenges that are never going to not need some accommodations. And there's others that, you know, can go away. And I've seen some remarkably successful kids, a couple of them I talked to this summer that are in college and doing very well. So, you know, there's, and again, that's anecdotal, but pretty significant. I would think, I'm a big fan of any kind of early childhood thing, especially with the increased requirements that seem to keep getting piled up in kindergarten. So that's, God bless our kindergarten teachers. I mean, that, you know, from what that was when I first started teaching thirty years ago to now is dramatic. So I'm, I'm a big fan of anything that can give kids a little light up going into kindergarten now.
Well, it'd be exciting to hear about your POP program, what you find out about that. And I know that really, outside of this conversation, it's been quite a number of years where, again and again, as we talk about the different challenges facing the district, special ed is often, you know, often right there. So anything where you are gathering more data, you're, you're eliminating or smoothing out one transition, or something's got to have, you might have payoffs, even if it's just for the challenge for the kindergarten teacher.
Yes.
And, you know, the first grade teacher as well. So that's awesome. Any other questions? Okay. Awesome. Well, thanks, Pam and Gail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, for the arrow pushing? Okay, then we can go on to our next discussion item, which is the, thanks again, guys. The draft of goals for Steve, the SMART goals that, we had, again, just to kind of recap, we had a work session with Deb MacFarlane about trying to get ourselves square for superintendent evaluation going forward. And one of the goals was to come up with some specific goals for Steve. We started that process and then asked the Policy and Personnel Committee to take a crack at drafting them, some based on prioritizing the domain areas from that conversation. You guys drafted them, Finance had a chance to look at them as well. And so Tammy, I'll let you take it from there, or the Policy Committee?
Sure. Well, so you just outlined the, the process. We, our Policy and Personnel sort of crafted the, some potential language, some draft language related to the four areas that we had prioritized in that Deb MacFarlane meeting. And with some help from Karen, she had actually done some pre-work and pulled some concepts and ideas together. So we built off of that and feedback from other board members as well. And we did end up coming, as you've all seen in your, in your committee meetings, where there was one personal professional learning goal, two communication goals, one resilience goal, and one decision-making goal. And we sort of talked through with Steve and our committee members what the documentation of these would look like. Sorry, let me step back. So at each of the committees, we've all now had the opportunity to look this over, and there was general agreement, actually, that these incorporated the direction we wanted to take and what we wanted to measure. Both committees, or I had from, from the Finance Committee's input on mentoring during that, for the personal professional learning goal. Didn't want to limit the concept to one leader mentor. And our committee was very open to, you know, making that mentor parentheses S.
Tammy, guys, are you guys looking for a copy? It's in the Finance and Facility Committee meeting folder, attached as a document for the last, for the October meeting. Now, we need to probably pop it somewhere else too, but that's where you will find it.
It's in both of the committee meetings.
Okay, both of the committees. Thank you. I thought you guys were...
Yeah, we might want to pop it back into this meeting's folder too, since it's something we're discussing tonight.
Yeah.
So, yeah, sorry, I didn't notice my colleague struggled in. I was...
They're just playing a video game.
So I was just saying, you know, we, we agreed that that would be a modification to just sort of open that up, to, to be flexible, let Steve be flexible in terms of if there were multiple mentors, especially if it were a specialized topic or an issue or an area that he had someone particular or multiple someones that could assist him. And then, again, in terms of the documentation and where this went with the scoring, I'm not entirely sure if Finance and Facilities talked about this, but we had the opportunity, we understood that Karen had developed a nice grid. We had talked verbally about where the administrative goals were fitting, if, if you were to overlay that with the, the matrix. And Karen literally did that for us, where it's now plotted out and we can...
We'll talk about that in a minute. Why don't we just go through the goal, the goals right now? But yes, that's...
So, well, yeah, so I guess our, I don't know if there is any further going over that we have to do for these five, because both committees kind of talked about it and there was general agreement. So I think we probably are at the point where we'll pass this forward for, I guess, official approval next, at our next meeting, would be my understanding.
Yes. Don't we just talk about a couple of words? That was all.
Yep.
Right. So the, so, okay, so there's one for professional, personal professional learning, two in communication, one in resilience, and one in decision-making?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for, actually, we should probably thank Molly too, who did a lot of the, she had life experience with this technique of drafting these and we're, we benefited from that, so appreciate that. I don't know if anybody wants to, whether it's ask a question or make a comment, or Steve, if you want to say anything about how you're...
Well, I, I just have a question, because we had quite a discussion in the facilities...
and the Finance Committee about each one of them, and trying to make sure we all had a common, shared understanding of what the language was. And I know that Steve was taking some notes, and we made a couple of comments about things we would like to perhaps revise, and I just wanted to check in with the Policy Committee, that, did you have that kind of conversation with Steve as well? And then also, where is Steve at in feeling comfortable with an understanding of the language and what we're thinking?
The one we really talked about was that change in the mentor versus mentors. The rest, we didn't really have any additional conversations, and Steve presented that he was comfortable.
I think we had those conversations as we were trying to formulate the SMART goals, so before we prepared the draft, we had kind of talked through all those and our similar understanding, so that went into the draft that we had shared with the other committee. Okay, so the draft that we're looking at here in the drive, and that I did print out, the meant, that change, making it mentors, is not there.
No, it needs to be.
Correct. So that needs to go there. So are there any other words that were proposed to be changed, or? That was the only one that we talked about.
Okay, I understand there was some question from Finance Facilities about, I guess, the communication plan.
I thought there was something in the communication. I wish I had my notes from there.
Yeah, one of the things that, we had a pretty extensive communication or discussion about, under communication, the BOM proposal, and so, understanding how the goals were related, and trying to add some clarity to that. And I felt pretty good about it when we were done, and Steve seemed to be okay with it. I don't know what kind of level of conversation you had in Policy Personnel on that, though.
Virtually none.
I think part of it was, Steve showed us.
That was helpful.
A graphic representation that had been done by the architect of staging the whole process, and we said, that's what we want, just personalize it for Haslett. And so I didn't know if in the end we needed to revise the language here, because we all had a discussion and thought, we were all on the same page, we understood what we were looking for.
And I, one, I think we wanted to make sure everyone, you know, our committee members were, we were all just on the same page with what we wanted, because there was, we first talked about, well, what do you mean by communication plan? Are you talking about a whole binder full, you know, detailing, and I don't think that's what we were looking for.
Well, maybe that's, if you have the next Policy Committee meeting, you could share, show them as well, the document that.
It's very obvious when you see it.
Yeah.
It's perfect clarity.
It's for the public to see, the document?
It's just a planning, it's just a planning document, or, kind of like when we talked a few months ago about the timelines, you know, if we were going to go in November versus May versus August.
Oh, okay.
What were the trigger dates in terms of things that we had to do?
Yeah, it was very basic.
And the plan for that along the way, in terms of.
Things that need to be done to go to the next step.
Right, so it's.
It was really.
So that's awesome. It sounds like, again, you know, and I know we've had this conversation before, that all of these things we're doing, with even the words here, it's all trying to get to where we're communicating this about everything. And so, I appreciate it, and it was important that these were written in a specific way, like to say, communication plan. But I think we also want to know that there's flexibility.
Right.
And that you're going to show us something, or ask us, hey, what do you think about this format, or see what, you know, Sharon's got a better idea, and we're going to adjust it along the way, as opposed to. We had a lot of conversation about how specific to make them without being overly prescriptive, and they're very difficult, you need to not change those. And this is our first time, and we may find that it was awesome, and that they're not overly prescriptive and everything works, or we may find that as we go along, Steve's going, you know what, this is, I'm not really sure, you guys told me this, but it's not making sense, or this is taking a long time, and it doesn't seem worth, you know. So they were kind of, could have to start somewhere, and then, you know, see how it works. One of the things I really appreciated about, you know, about what you guys came up with here, was that I think it's a nice combination of articulating in a way, in a goal way, something that was probably going to be happening anyway, but again, just helps us put it in this framework and make it part of the conversation, and yet, and also creating some other, moving in some other directions that we were, you know, looking to move in as well. So it seemed like a good balance of, and not just, you know, giving Steve some make-work.
Having something specific to evaluate.
Yes, having that, too.
And to that point, I'm sort of, the very last paragraph, it says documentation of progress on SMART roles. One thing that actually just jumped out at me, that I don't know, it didn't resonate the first time, first couple of times I've read through this, literally the last sentence, a tool will also be developed to allow board members to track activities. I think we verbalized that really it's going to be on we board members to track and use whatever tool we all feel is going to be helpful, and I fear that that might be implying that we expect Steve to develop a tool.
Yeah, no, no.
I want that to be clear, that that's not the expectation.
Thank you.
When we treat that language.
Thank you for clarifying that. Just one second, Steve, I don't know if there's anything, do you feel you've got good clarity on these?
I do, you know, and for me, one of the things I think will be helpful is, we talked about in the committee meetings, is creating an evaluation update part of each of the committee meetings, so that each month, we're spending five or 10 minutes going over some of the things that have happened that month, or that are happening in the upcoming months, so that as you, then you can document those things as we go. So it gives you a chance to be fresh, and the idea is that when we talk about it, that you can make notes of wherever that, where that looks for you. Because as Tammy said, it may be, look different for each individual board member, it may not be the same.
Right.
So I want to give you the opportunities to be able to get that feedback as it happens throughout the year, and I think having that as a standing item in our committee meetings will, because a lot of times we just do that, we'll talk about things going on at the end of the meeting, you know, this is what's happening at Wilkes-Barre, or something's going on at the middle school, and so, what things we've done, and what decisions we've made as it relates to that particular issue that's going on. So I think that might be a good way to start that feedback between myself and the board through that standing discussion, so.
Okay, so kind of talk a little bit about the, both the scoring thing and the tool thing, which I think will, just kind of lay out a little bit of where, I've had a chance to talk to Steve for a while, I know I've had a chance to talk with Tammy some, to Karen some, I haven't just talked to everyone, but the goal really is to not put the onus on Steve, that we can do our part to keep track. He's telling, he's communicating with us, and we can take responsibility to note that. So, okay, Karen took a cut at something, and we'll work on this a little bit and share it, and if it turns out it works for you guys, great, but I think, again, you may find a different way of looking at the other thing that, and what Karen did here is based, using the matrix as the organization. And, actually, I'll tell you this, I'll pass it around, we tried to copy it right before we came, but she's got the shading on here, and we couldn't get the shading, and so it wasn't going to be useful. But it's basically, on column down is the different matrix areas, and then across, there's a column of SMART goals, so if there's a SMART goal that's associated with a domain, it's there, and then there's a column with administrative goals, so if there's an administrative goal that's associated with the domains. And then Karen went through and shaded the domain areas that had either an administrative goal, and there are like six that aren't shaded. When you actually really look at it in that visual way, it just really jumps out where, you know, how much of the work that, you know, Steve is leading with his administrators is just what this tool tells us a good superintendent should be doing.
So six of the subdomains.
It's, yeah, we'll pass it around, yeah.
Can we just give them each of each?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea, then you can kind of see.
And you can kind of just.
Yes. So she's, it's each domain and subdomain, so it's only a handful of subdomains.
You said there were six of them.
Right, yeah. So, now, again, you know.
Yeah, not six of the 10.
Yeah, right, right, right. So only, only like, just a handful of subdomains that don't have, you know. The other thing that we may play around with as a potential, again, visual, so maybe this works for you, this is a great way that you can keep yourself notes, because we can get this, you know, give you a copy of it, you can keep it on your personal drive, and, you know, great. The other way to look at is to take the administrative goal document, and, you know, and as we're looking to see the goals, look to see the domains connected there, too. I just don't want, I don't, again, I don't want anybody to have to do a lot of work about this, I don't want, you know, it should just be, we're going to get reporting on the administrative goals from the administrative goal document, that's what, you know, so it makes sense to see that, you know, connection. And maybe you're just going to keep, type notes or write in a notebook, you know.
It's very undercard.
Whatever.
It's interesting for me talking to coaches last.
No, that's okay. So we'll still, you know, my thought would be, I guess what I wanted to ask you guys to do is, think a little bit about what, you know, what way you're going to want, what's going to work for you. And, you know, again, I halfway wonder personally whether I want to take my orange notebook and write things in it, so, but I don't think that we all have to do it the same. It's going to be whatever, you know, whatever works for you, and, so, but I did like the way this gives us the visual of, you know, again, all of this work is all showing us what, you know, something should do.
Well, and I can send everybody.
Yes, well, maybe, I think there's some, I think we got to make a few corrections, you know, before, so.
Okay.
I will, Karen will send it to you, but we'll just make sure that we've.
We'll have to be careful when we're sending, that we make sure that we save these individuals if they're.
Exactly. Yes, we're not going to jointly edit the editing list.
Right, right, so it's not shared.
No.
So actually, the way to, yeah, we'll have to figure out the logistics, but it's not going to be a share with everyone, it's going to be a here is yours, Dan.
Here's an attachment.
We might need a little at a committee meeting, how to save the document individually.
And remember, this isn't a document that's going to be part of the evaluation, it's just your own document.
It's a way for us, I like the idea of us keeping notes, and then so we can make sure that we can save this individually, because actually, it can be a little tricky.
Yes.
Taking a shared document and saving your own individual personal file.
You share the template through the folder with them.
Right, and where you put it.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, we can, so we'll cross that bridge, but the idea is, it's got to be in an individual way.
Right.
That, you know, we cannot all be editing the same document.
So that goes, I'm jumping, but like, in the My Drive instead of the Green Drive.
Correct, yes.
Correct. And it's easy to change the language that was there, to make it, the board members will develop a method or tool that will allow each individually to track it, so we'll make sure that it's clear, that we're not doing it collaboratively.
Okay, okay. So, that's, so then, in terms of going forward, do you think we, we probably do need a board action to adopt the goals, or is that, do we not? I don't know.
Typically, I don't know that we.
We do.
For the administrative goals, we don't formally adopt those.
No, so, so then why don't we do this, why don't we, if, Tammy, if you guys could edit the goal document, or Molly can, and then maybe get to Michelle, and Steve and Sharon, and figure out then where, maybe it goes in the superintendent evaluation.
Hold it, I think that makes sense.
So we have that, and then Karen and I, or may I ask others for help, or whatever, will work on this tool, and then we'll figure out by the next committee meetings, a way to make sure everyone has access to their own individual version, too.
So in terms of what we would adopt as board, we do have to still decide on the percentage?
Well, we still, and we still have, so we have to come back and go through that. Now, Steve and I have had a conversation, I think we may be, we may be open to just taking all the, taking all these goals into the matrix, once you see how they are all there versus a separate score, but we'll have, we'll have some future conversations in the future. But, yeah, that we do need to figure out for sure sooner rather than later. And then I don't know, again, we had to adopt the tool, we didn't have to adopt the score before, so.
That's all.
We've already adopted the tool, so I don't, so if you want to tweak.
I don't know if we have to do anything.
I don't think you do.
I think we just, but we want to have a common understanding in something that works for Steve and makes sense, so.
Yeah, I think I was complaining with you.
That's understandable, so. Okay?
Just, just real quick, I just wanted to say, I'm very encouraged about how this direction of this process, and want to thank those committee members who put in that extra time to help put this stuff together, that's, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, okay, awesome.
In terms of goal development, it was one of the less painful ones I've gone through personally, doing a little bit of this professionally as well, it was nice group think that actually was effective, the post all over the place.
Awesome. Okay, we will move on to board reports, then, Finance and Facilities Committee.
Well, we had an extensive discussion about this.
Awesome. At Policy Personnel.
And we just basically revisited and made sure we were all on the same page, and used the feedback that we'd received from Finance and Facilities.
Okay.
Essentially, our meeting as well.
Okay, we'll move on to items from board members, I do have one, I did get to go to the cardboard challenge at Murphy. I didn't make Rowley's, but I made Murphy's, and that was a lot of fun to see, to see what they had come up with, and it was Lisa Wickman, actually, Steve was there when I was there, gave us a nice explanation of how the whole thing worked, and one of the things that really impressed me, besides just the coolness of the projects and everything, was while we were there, there were quite a number of classes that were cycling through, and just to see all the excitement in the kids, and all the respect they had for their schoolmates' work. Nobody, they were all following the ones not do not touch, they were reminding each other, nope, this is the do not touch section, you know, but yet, exploring the ones to be explored, that actually struck me.
I'll just go, I was at the Rowley one, and, you know, I'll echo all of your comments, and just was blown away by the creativity of these students. I mean, I don't think I was anywhere near that creative at that age, probably not now anyway, but, it was a neat event, and I was really impressed.
Well, I did a decent row when I was there, too, but it was good to see how Mrs. Corwell and I'm sure Mrs. Wickman had done the same thing, where they took what they learned from last year's and what worked within, and applied it to this year, and to see how it changed how excited the kids were.
Yeah.
So it was a lot of fun to walk around with the parents.
It really shows what our A-plus teachers do, and the extra mile they put in, and, again, another unique situation for our kids. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, we will go on to our action items, that's right, we have five, I'll read them, we'll see if we want any of them pulled. We have the approval of the minutes from the September 25th Board, regular Board meeting, approval of the minutes of the October 2nd Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, approval of the minutes of the October 6th Policy Personnel Committee meetings, approval of the 1617 district audit, and the out-of-state field trip request for Haslett High School French class to Chicago. Does anybody want any items pulled?
Yes, I would actually like to pull the first item, the regular minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, then that leaves us with four, items two through five. Would anyone care to make a motion about acting on those?
I'm either we act on items two, three, four, and five.
The wheel.
Approve, excuse me, thank you.
Awesome, okay, thanks Molly. All right, all in favor of approving action items two through five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that motion carries for two to five, and Tammy, I'll leave it to you for sure.
Thank you, so I'm noticing, and thank you to Michelle, I had caught a couple of fairly minor edits, but I wanted them to be changed, and I caught them at the last minute this afternoon, so in the packets of what you all received was the original version, what I'm seeing in the, in the drive, it has actually been updated, but I wanted to call attention to those changes. So one thing that needed to be changed was in reference to, I'm sorry, I just changed the page, okay, so in reference to the committee reports, so this is on page two, and it's, oh, wait, no, that's not right. Yes, so under the Policy Personnel Committee, there was a line that said, Aunt Palavrento will share five goals prior to, and she had said prior to the next Policy Personnel Committee, and the actual, what happened, and what we communicated would happen, was that it was going to be prior to the Finance and Facilities Committee, which was the first of the two.
So that correction's been made, okay.
So that minute correction has been made in the version you see, and then the other was a much more minor change under items from board members. It had originally said first annual food drive rail, tailgate, and it was a food truck tailgate, it wasn't actually a food drive, it was just a fun community event.
Okay.
So that is now also reflected in the version you have in your, in your drives.
Okay, awesome.
So I would like to make a motion to move the minutes as corrected.
Okay, a second. Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes of those corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, Tammy. And announcements, so I've got several up here. A regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be held on October 23rd here at 7:00. That's our next full board meeting. There's a finance facilities committee meeting scheduled for November 6th at 3:30 PM at this building as well. Policy Personnel Committee has been scheduled for November 8th at 7:30 AM in this building as well. And then our, after that, we will have our regularly scheduled board meeting on November 13th at 7:00 in the board rooms. Anyone do something about our adjourning? To moved.
Second.
Okay, all right, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know how because I don't have a icon here.